Good evening, everybody. We'll be officially commencing tonight's meeting, Lynn Zoning Board of Appeals, on May 6, 7 p.m. If we can have a roll call for the members, please.
Member Paez?
Present.
Member Marci? Absent. Member Gilvain?
Here.
Present. Member Maggio?
Absent.
Member Christopher?
Here.
Member Olson?
Present.
Member Brown?
Present.
Member Lopez?
Present.
So, we will be starting tonight with case number 10096, 39 Lynch Shore Drive. If we can have a reading of the case, please.
39 Lynch Shore Drive, Lynn, Massachusetts, parcel number 102-554-011. Petitioner Carrie Hartwork of 39 Lynch Shore Drive, Lynn, Massachusetts, by her attorney, Samuel A. Vitale, ZBA case 10096. To petition pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 40a, Section 6, for a finding to permit the alteration of a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling by the addition with a private garage, finding that such use in the R1 Family District is not substantially more detrimental than the current use pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 40a, Section 6, on a lot with 4,987 square feet and 78.4 feet of frontage, with the addition in private garage with lot coverage in excess of 38%, 43.7% and less than the required rear and right side yards. Finding such alterations are not substantially more detriment than the current use to the neighborhood. Massachusetts Journal Law, Chapter 40, Section 6 states, "Pre-existing nonconforming structures or uses may be extended or altered, providing that no such extension or alteration shall be permitted unless there is a finding by the permit-granting authority that such change, extension, or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming use to the neighborhood."
Thank you, Mr. Olson. We'll give it to Journey Vitale and the petitioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Journey Vitale. This is Carrie Hartwork. The property at 39 Lynch Shore Drive at the outset, I want to thank the board for its development with respect to continuing this so that we could arrive at what we think is an improved plan. The Ward Counselor, Consul Cota Alson, joined us at a neighborhood meeting, and we had the opportunity to hear from those who invited, many of whom are not butters, but are in the neighborhood. And we presented a plan which I'll address point by point, which was revised from, and I can tell you probably differences, where lot coverage is reduced. Originally, we would have needed a sideline variance if we had a two-car garage, and as we reduced it to a one-car garage. But let's start with a little bit of the history. This is a stadium Victorian on the corner of Greystone Park and Lynch Shore Drive. Built in the 1880s, it's well-maintained. Cherry acquired it just under $1 million a couple of years ago. But its history was, actually, I looked in 1926, there was a person, as I said at a meeting earlier, we don't know, but another gentleman was a doctor, but clearly, as it progressed through the years, it was generally a doctor's office, with the office sort of at the front. That was assumed for many, many years. It then appeared to be increasingly leased in the interior to a point that it had seven or eight bedrooms. One of the benefits of this proposal was that the number of bedrooms gets reduced. This was a concern to one major about the impact on sewage and my water and sewer experience, short hands, that's 100 gallons a day for a bedroom. So we're actually reducing the number of bedrooms in the most recent point. But let's start at the beginning with, the zone ordinance says in 6.1 that a private garage, which is a permitted accessory, needs to any residential dwelling. And in fact, not only does Carrie want to take advantage of that, there once was a garage for many years on this site. Adjacent to this site is a property at 26 and 28 Oishon Park. Now, upon the many, I brought sets of the documents because the Board of Appeals in 1932 approved a couple of things. Build a one-story addition attached to the sidewall of the dwelling to be used as a two-car garage. And then, they added, in 1941, extend the side and rear wall, raise the roof for sleeping porch. And then, as recently as 2004, it was removed and replaced the existing deck, which is on top of the garage. I went back and looked, and I think in 2013, sort of Greystone goes around this way. I represented an address in Greystone Park that did something similar. So, the character of this neighborhood is that people have garages and some have decks. But clearly, this is the adjacent property that I want to show you, that were the builds in 1932.
Is that 36th? Is that 36th? Is that 20K, 26th?
All right. And we will get to neighbors and anybody else who's interested in talking about the petition after the petitioner has finalized their presentation. And we'll open it up for anybody to speak, in favor or against. Please continue.
As I indicated, this property had a garage. That garage was built in 1947. Now, we don't know what happened to this garage. We talked with someone who was in the local property, 26th and 28th, one of the units. Now, he's in Seattle, Washington, and he told us he remembered about 39. So these are the grounds with respect to the transpired in 39. This is the property to the children's pharmacy. The petition, this is the part of the occasion and the R1, this one was repaired by the existing single-family garage. And here, this is in 1947. And 25, this is the renovation. So, we know there was a garage there because it was being repaired in 47. We know there was a garage there that was restored some in the building to give us a history that the garage, it is now the living adjacent, was there. So, with the step, the first issue there, the ceiling, the second issue was when the ceiling was.
Excuse me, Mr. Olson. Journey Vitale. Where does, I don't see any, I might just be missing your document saying that the garage was repaired at any point.
No, this is coming down.
Okay.
This is 39.
Yeah, okay, good, good.
So, with respect to the outset, Mr. Olson wrote the notice. He can rightly say, with respect to what we're seeing, it's a pre. The reason for that is that the lot size is not 10,000 square feet. We have the reckless frontage. But the other issue that needs a nonconforming structure, so the use of the permitted use, the flexible use is allowed, the garage, the permitted accessory use. We know, this can't determine given the permit we did find, that said, they built an addition at the rear. There's no diet, we have no dimensions. And we know that at some point, they built an addition at 39 to the rear. Because it's a corner lot, because it's a irregular shape, that makes it somewhat unique because if you have a corner lot, you have two fronts. So the front line Greystone and the front line Lynch Shore Drive. And with respect to the work that I'm talking about in 1996, I think it was, I can't tell you what the people proposed back of the house to be built, because this is the only document that I found, but you know, that says that's 30 Greystone. So, the numbers go 37 and 39 Lynch Shore Drive, but apparently, there was a number once fronting on the Grystone. But for our purposes, I was promised the people had to see the Lynch County. If you know where the front door is and the kind of the rear is. And since the building is numbered 39 Lynch Shore Drive, for our purposes, and we think the plotland slightly at the side, the plot present 39 Lynch Shore Drive. So that makes the rear, and you look at the dimensions of the rear, it's not anything big. So, it's not conforming because it doesn't have today's requisite glasses. It's not conforming, talking about the structure, because it doesn't have today's reality. But clearly, it was there before the adoption of zoning, that it proves this thing. So, what we've done proposed and what we brought forward is a plan to build a garage. Originally, the plan then, it was going to be a two-car garage, tandem park. And that would have resulted, if this is the front, if this is the rear, it would have resulted on a right sideline less than the required. But now, because we've agreed to reduce the size of the garage to a single garage, and I know nothing about automobiles and trucks, but Carrie's got a Ford F150 something. So that is the reason for the garage. So that's one request, really. But it's conforming as a garage. The next question is, as you can see from this drawing, and to me, it's easier reading, looking at the front of elevation, and I think we many other colleagues have, of the line, oh, no, this is not. You can bring up any.
No.
I've legitited it.
So, if you read, I'm not looking here as you see the garage difference. So, we wired that in. So, not only is the state that can say that if you alter a pre-existing nonconforming structure, then you need approval, where certain need was called by 4865, which was also correct. And with respect to the city of Lenoir, it says that you cannot alter a pre-existing nonconforming structure except with the approval of whatever it is. That's why. So, just adding the garage to the garage. But we're adding the garage and we're putting a bedroom in the south. And so, it's the garage in this, and then we're doing changes in the front. And so, when you go to page 2 of the plan that we presented to you, you see that that describes the second issue with respect to what we need to make, which is we're increasing the nonconformity of the lot coverage. So, what's before you is the garage addition, and as the architect has shown, at one point, I thought we'd be at 4840, the lot coverage in the single-family district is 30%. And with this proposal, we've the 39.6. And they put the zoning analysis that the architect did on the Lynch Shore Drive. So, those are the things we're seeing. And as I said, we had a meeting with neighbors who addressed what we think are legitimate concerns of the people who came to that meeting and others that we interacted with and who knew, the council officer, who was first enough to host the meeting. But many later, and I thought I would say this, that ultimately, decision trees, he pointed that out, people and said to them, and encouraged them, come, someone here, Mr. Bligh. And you hear, if you recall, those are people who, they were prior, previously, which I think was in April, we had remanded from the court a few cases involving the construction of a single-family dwelling. I pointed out then, like now, that the Massachusetts Supreme Court has held that generally, concerns about you are community dangers. As I also pointed out, see that there's nowhere in the Congress on the way to the city or the state statute that governs some, that the word people means. People are.
I'm sorry. We're going to be finishing up, we're going to be finishing up with the presentation, and then we will have the opportunity to be able to. Journey Vitale, please let us finish so we can open up this one.
Not only did I correct it in English, I grabbed it from the floor down bar and passed it by. I'm familiar with the way the state statute says, well, the Supreme Court in Massachusetts says, and I remind you that I gave a copy of the ten case. So, major coastal communities, Gloucester, I think even Swansbury, some have their purposes plus view or somehow consider provisions. That doesn't exist. With respect to you, it's been determined, as I say, by the Supreme Court to be a community danger. And I want to draw to this, I probably answered, what Swansbury did was, is Swansbury began. If people can build garages, you put gaps in, we want the same opportunity. We have confirmed, reduced it, we satisfied, we don't violate, just as the presentation I gave of Eastern Avenue, we don't violate the existing height requirement of the zones and city of rent. We have revised this plan many times, many times, to achieve two things. Reduce the amount of the need we need of lot coverage and satisfy the need to have parking with a front. And at the same time, in the interior, rearrange the right side of bedrooms any longer will be four. And so, that's why I'm spending the point, the determination is to be this, whether what we propose is substantially more detrimental, could be detrimental, let's say, more detrimental in its effect on the neighborhood. And that's why I took time to point out to you that there are other homes in this neighborhood that have gotten redeemed from this board, you folks, five boards to the structure of it. And that's what we want to be able to do. It's a permitted use within the existing height requirements. And what we're really wanting to find in terms of the effect on the and without, that's the 4865 community, that can make any determination with respect to the nonconformities which we have in the river, adversely affecting lot coverage. The rear is the rear, the sideline, the setbacks, the front setback. Can't change the lot, sure, you can't change the back, it's a corner lot. So, with that, I want to give it serious consideration, approval, what's that.
All right.
We may ask the process, we'll give it that.
All right, thank you. We will be opening it first for any questions from the board. But before opening it to questions, I do want to read some letters that we have received, and I just want them heard before we commence with any questions and keep the process flowing.
Got an email from Counselor Constantino with the approval of the sender. Please read this at the meeting tonight because you cannot make it. Hi, Coco, my name is Ivana Strug, and I own and reside at Unit 316 Greystone Park. I am writing regarding the proposed addition of a garage at 39 Lynch Shore Drive. Based on information presented to us, what is being proposed cannot be classified as a garage. It is plain house expansion. I would not object to garage addition, but I strongly oppose a multi-level addition of living space. I'm not sure if you're aware that this is not the first attempt to build a garage addition on our street. First was allowed against the strong community objection. And since it was built, the owner is constantly trying to find a way to turn it into a living space and rent to more people. We met in person when you were campaigning for your role. Again, I support the garage, single-level construction, nothing on top of it.
Well, the address in.
I go to the second. I do not object to the garage. I object to the addition of the construction even under the second of the garage.
Okay, thank you. We'll bring the other one in.
Well, she didn't, she didn't send an email. Well, my name is Ivana Strug, and I own and reside at 16 Greystone Park.
So, I will vote to waive this reading since we have the [inaudible] here, and we can try to tap that topic. So, we'll open it up. Member Christopher, you have a question?
Sure. So, I see that there's a new addition would increase, or you said that the addition would increase the nonconformity.
On the side, it looks like an apartment on the other side.
It would be 12 on all sides, except the rear, which has always been a fair amount of 10.4. But I found that permanently in 1996, we has no dimension to just build the rear.
But isn't part of, the reason why you're saying it is nonconforming and existing is because you call them a garage, correct?
No, the nonconformity starts with, you look at use, the uses are familiar.
Yep.
But the lot, in the zone ordinance that was brought, maybe when it first came in, you could build a house on 4,000 square feet. Then go back to 6,000 square feet. But the common requirement of single-family dwelling is 10,000. This lots they 5,000 and then 800 something. So, a lot is nonconforming as to lots. Then the building was constructed, and I can't say with certainty, but I found in 1996, firmly, that said, build an addition at the rear. But I can tell you that it appears that the rear is 10.4, which is not it. 39 is the front, and that's the rear. Then rear yard is nonconforming. But then, when we file, we're going to build a two-car garage, which will be centered to the right, which moves down, down way is the main for the right side. That's no longer the case. So, the existing nonconformities of the lot status and the existing rear yard. The addition, and it makes the lot coverage greater because it's an attached garage. Once you attach it to the structure, or even if you put it there detached, but on the street, because it's a room, you've got to measure what the percentage of building is to the total lots on it. And the thing with garages is about 49%. With a single-car garage, when the addition we're proposing is 30,000. 30 is the permitted, it's 10,000, 30,000. But the nonconformities that were under 486 were those that existed from the get-go, from when the building was constructed. We don't know whether the rear yard was that in 1880 or whenever. But it might have been that in 1996, except I don't think they would have given a permit in 1996 to build a rear yard because my recollection is the rear has always been 15. So, I believe that that's one issue. The other is, it's conceivable because if you look at that other, that permit, the 1996 permit, it calls it the 30 Gro, Greystone Park. So they're looking at it perhaps that way, which would affect, again, where is your rear? But the dimensions between dwellings that are on the side, more than sufficient. It's the distance in the rear which is less than required. But the addition's not creating any greater violation with respect to rear yard outside. Or frontage. Or frontage. Excuse me, ah, sorry. Or frontage, rear side. No, the frontage off Lynch Shore is only 20 feet. I think the zoning box is there. But the other is, the corner lot is a footnote, a footnote 10 that says, if you're on a corner lot, you're going to have frontage on both streets with this frontage. So if you look at the dimension of Greystone, it's 10 feet, 10 feet, which is the required.
I have a question. So, looking here, Journey Vitale, one of the reasons why we continued the case was for the purposes of being able to engage with the community and being able to address any issues from the surrounding neighborhood. I'm curious to understand how that went. Ward Counselor Coca Allison attended. So I'm interested in understanding how that went. How did that conversation with the neighbors went? And then, also curious to know if there is a list or any other type of documentation where neighbors signed on to a petition where they're not explicitly against? This is not.
You haven't finished, Mr. Olson, thank you.
No, I understand. But what I'm asking is that in previous cases, we have also seen then, in a petition that might be controversial to the surrounding neighborhood, we have seen from you and other petitioners a list where people have signed on saying, I am not against this. Is that, has that also been pursued between the interim of continuing and now coming to this?
Let me give you this distinction.
Yeah.
The city provided a list of the butters. The Ward Counselor did a mailing greater than that. From what I could see, he mailed to people on Greystone, to people on Lynch Shore Drive, to people on King Street. So, he did a mailing separate and distinct from the notice that the city gave. And that mailing went wherever they determined, but that was my sense. We had a meeting last night of which he was present and several neighbors, one of the immediate butters. But I'm concerned about immediate butters. But the standard is the neighborhood. And that's why I spent time elaborating with respect to the character of the neighborhood. The house that's adjacent towards going to its King Street is also a Victorian. And one of the things that I said there, and I think people at least acknowledge, is that they've had quarrels they've had quarrels with what they call the ugly building, which is further down on Lynch Shore Drive. I don't know how that came to be, but the architect made a concerted effort to use the Victorian style to make a blend with not only the house next door, but the fine homes that are all on Lynch Shore Drive. But with respect to some of the people who were at the neighborhood meeting here tonight, some are not. We answered questions, as I say, there was one question about the impact on sewage. And the other was, and you've heard this many a time, about traffic. And I gave the same response I usually do, which is if we all disappear tonight, I'll bet that there'll be more traffic in Lynn next year than there is this year. Traffic is a community concern. We're building a one car garage. We require to have two on-site parking spaces and a half. I don't forget it first. And there may be some other homes that don't have 5,000 feet, 100 square feet. There may be some that don't have the properties that we have. But those are also nonconforming. What brings us here is that when we were doing alterations, we saw a group, I can point out to you that if you did an examination of other properties, you might find there might have been other law obligations where I'd so we just wanted to treat it fairly. The neighborly, I thought Coco, Coco sent me a text that I'd glad to share with you this morning about what a great meeting was. But as I said at the outset, he said to the people there that this was their opportunity. They really were considering figuring through the board of peers. But from our sense, we felt that we addressed legitimate concerns. We answered every question, maybe one, maybe 45 minutes. There are some people here today that didn't know what we're dealing with. But there are other people here who did.
Okay, thank you. I have one follow-up question real quick and just to confirm on the notice that we have, we have labeled here a 43.7% lot coverage, which is the exceedance. This was the original submission and the new plan is now 39. Okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
It's as I explained, the difference being two car, she didn't make that. As opposed to one car. It's all stacked.
Mr. Olson?
I got a couple of several questions, just more on clarification of what submitted here. The the particular coverage calculation plan, there's a schedule in there that shows the residential one requirements versus existing versus proposed. And one of the things that I need to understand is resident one requires two parking places per unit. And it says the proposed is one per unit approved upon existing conditions. It says one per unit in the proposed column. And it says approved upon existing condition. Can you clarify, is that a typo? Or explain it?
The difference is the parking requirement should bring anything up to a single family that's residential, 1.5 spaces.
Right.
So for single family, the second difference is so the total number of spaces you need by two. That's number, then there was so-called assigned spans. Parking space is not by 18. So but the other big difference is that if you have a two family or a three family, you can't have what's so-called stack parking, one behind them, gap in them. So people, second floor, one in their car, they're not the person standing first. So here the garage is one and the big one in the drive behind the garage. And a sufficient, we call it a building, it's more than 18 feet. The front setback of each garage is 28 something. So with one in the garage and one in the drive, we may be satisfied. And we're complying with the number and we're assigned.
So there's one outside parking and one in the garage parking. So I just think Yeah, so I just think this, this schedule should be clarified to say, there's actually two parking places on the property. And it's misleading because it, right, but it's misleading because it says one per unit on the table proposed. You can look at the
I see what you're saying.
Right. Right, but it's saying you're only
I think you told that from looking at the some of the
Right, but I want the, the R1 requirement is two per unit. The proposed saying there's only one, you're telling me there's two, one in the garage and one outside. That's not what this, that's not what this table says. So I just think that, yeah, so that should be corrected is, is, yeah. Two. Okay, so then the other, the other question I have is, there's an existing deck in the front to the left facing from Lynch Shore Drive. And it looks like that deck is being removed. And there'll be an addition within that existing footprint going up two stories. And two stories up and then is there a deck on top of that? Okay, so just the roof.
In that, right, this, it's true. You said that the two cats that are built is correct. You don't see height, I think you remember from last time, we would hear height is measured in feet and it's measured in stories.
Yep.
Simple district, you can have 35 feet and two and a half stories, but it's done from the beat level to the breaks and meanwhile.
Okay, so then on the other side, that's a bigger addition where the garage is being put in. And I'm trying to, it's hard to follow from, from from these plans, but it looks like there's the garage and then it looks like this. Yeah, so there's two levels there. I'm trying to understand why for the garage, you got the garage, a level and a level. Like what's in that space? They don't have a floor plan. Okay. So, and that tower is actually higher than the rest of the house.
It does not exceed 35 feet.
It doesn't exceed the zoning, but it's higher than the remainder of the house. Not according to the plan unless the architect was wrong.
I think it's 35 consistent.
It does not exceed.
Yeah. Definition of buildings of high energy story goes to the feet of the ceilings, it goes to the spacing of the lot.
So, so I would say that this, these elevations need to be corrected. Cause I'm looking at a dimension here, 35 feet. And the roof line is drawn higher than 35 feet where the dimensions show.
If it's at scale, it's above 35. If it's at scale, it's above 35.
Alright, so he's, he's considering that too.
Yeah, okay. Do you have any other questions to?
Yeah. The, the footprint is growing and there's existing downspouts on the house that spill out into the driveway. What is, what is the plan for for the downspouts now? Because the, you know, you got 20 feet now. Now you're going to have, you're within the seven and a half feet, but what's going to happen to that drainage? And it has less space. Yeah, I would, I would like some kind of stormwater management there because that could be a nuisance to the butters. And make it, because you are increasing the footprint there. Yeah, so I, I think the roof lines are changing dramatically for the house. And the existing downspouts will be probably taken out. And there'll be new downspouts, so there'll be roofs coming on top of other roofs. And I don't know what the drainage pattern is, but it could concentrate flow in an area where it wasn't before. It potentially cause a problem. I think, I think some sort of, some sort of plan to make sure that that doesn't just impact your butters.
Okay. Good, we'll, we'll circle back, member Christopher, and we'll keep going, then we'll circle back if there are any others.
So, oh, you touched on a little bit about why this, you need a section six finding as opposed to a variance. And I'm looking at the table that you submitted. As it stands, it looks like your lot coverage is conforming to the current zoning, correct?
It's close.
It's close, but it could
But we anticipated that that was one of the items. If with the two car garage, they would have to get the two reasons, because for the better right sideline, it increased dramatically the lot coverage. Should after, actually before the needle of meetings, meeting with individuals, it was agreed to make changes so that it reduced the size of what would have affected lot coverage. It may exempt the right sideline from. So the original plan had a two car garage, which affected both of those. Now it has a one car garage. It's now, I think, a 39, not 30.
Yeah, so, but, but the zone, the maximum coverage in the R1 zone, according to, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, is 30%. So you're, you'd be, you'd be increasing that. So it's not a non, it's not nonconforming in that, in that part.
No, but with respect to what is required, first 7.4 of the zoning, it says that any, any change or alteration to a pre-existing nonconforming building, it only be done with that's all it said there. The statute says that you mean, if you're doing anything that increases nonconforming, meaning 48.6 time, which is what happens, impact and effect the neighborhood. So I can tell you that we went out and looked at other adjoining properties and we're satisfied that other adjoining properties also currently exceed lot coverage. So that's number one. Number two, we looked at some of the other dimensions in terms of lot size. Because we already know the effects here, but the neighborhood. We changed the conclusion that that's why we needed the 48.6 time. The last point is that when you do propose, the state statute says that, but the case law says that determination relationship with the father is a three-pronged test. It's whether you're doing substantially the same thing and substantially the same man. And whether, if that's the case, in other words, if I've got a residential building and I'm doing something residential and I'm doing it substantially with the same man and that was what was created, then you wish you had passed the neighborhood. And that's why you need to make that 48.6 time. And that's why the statute says that if you do that, even if what was supposed to detrimental, it has to be substantially more detrimental. What are you trying to do is contrast, well, is there not only on this side, but on the adjoining sides? So that when you make that determination, you're not just judging it on this side, but it's an impact. Unfortunately, we don't say what owns the neighborhood. But the council, what the father, what the assessors gave us.
Yeah, I guess, and I understand why it's nonconforming as regards to lot area. It's, it's about the, the, the coverage that, that I don't understand why you wouldn't need a variance for that.
Well, I think that's a good variance because it's, what it tells you, it's unique, irregularly shaped lots. It's unique because it's a column. It's shapeless, I would refer to it like a geometry teacher. It's not a rectangle.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And certainly has an impact, especially on the rear and on the right side. That's if he, it's sort of like gets wider as you go further up.
Yeah.
Into a swastika, I mean, surely.
I, yeah, I just, if you're asking for a section six finding and the, the sheet says that a variance is required.
Yeah, that's right. I think that means that another one will with the lot.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, that was my concern. The legal standard is much higher for a variance than for a section six finding. And I do, I do, would be, I do think you'd look at that, to look at it differently.
But I think the question is, what do you need both? To do both, and I think the cases with respect to the 48.6 time, they acknowledge that you start off, presumably the reason you're nonconforming, you don't need the, whatever the requirement, current dimensional regulations are. So you want to meet some and not the others. But the real question is, will you change whatever needs to change and what is the overall effect on the neighborhood? You wouldn't, you wouldn't be nonconforming if you met sideline, you didn't have it. But so typically the people who don't need start with lots on it because the cities of all and all the people who are not thinking of anxiety, they go the other way and reduce lots. Which will probably more lots conform.
Yeah.
But right down, the nonconformities to lot size, and from what I thought, the rear yard is nonconforming for now.
And I know I have member Gilrain, I've missed you, but just real quick, attorney Lamana. So for determining who would need, who determines if that issue that was raised by member Christopher is indeed legitimate and has to be addressed, is it the board or is it somebody else?
Okay. I believe that with the whole discussion, the only requirement is a determined determination prior to the application before. So what will happen?
But just by
The commission will say you need six, a variance, one just a variance. But if you appeal that, is that you think that they do the commissioners? Well, I don't know if the commission will say to you, you need to say, and a variance.
Okay. Member Gilrain?
My question's addressed, I just wanted to confirm that the current and proposed use is still just a single family. That's that's all.
Yes. Any other questions from the board? Seeing none, then we will be opening it to any attendance that are here. First, we will be opening it up for any attendance who would like to speak in favor of the petition. Anybody who would like to speak in favor of the petition? Seeing none, going once, twice.
I thought it would be none in favor first before I respond.
Usually what we do is, we do in favor, we have a series of questions if the board members have any questions. And then we move into anybody who has concerns or against. And then we also have a round of questions if members would like context and additional questions. Would you like to step up or? Would you like to come up or not?
Sure.
Okay. And if you can just, if you're name and address there?
Okay, next door, 37 Lynch Shore Drive. I'm probably the most impacted. I think others still have impacted right now. My statement is, is I said that I had no choice, but it's for this third proposal. It's down to one, it's down to two.
Can you just step up to the microphone so that we can?
Yeah, we had no choice. We've been through the first proposals, the second, which had a ground coverage of 42 plus 48% was the second. This one's down to 39 and change, which is still well over the 30. Because we just assumed this was going to get approved at the board. So this is, that's, that's our thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else who would like to speak in favor of the petition? Seeing none, we will be opening it to anybody here who would like to speak against the petition. Please provide your name and address. And if any comments can be made near the microphone so that folks at home can also be with us.
My name's Susan Baker. I live directly behind 39. I've been there since 1984. There's never been a garage there. I was under, I was led to believe that there was going to be a one-story garage built there. But three stories is not going to work for me. Partly because we built a deck on top of our garage and it looks for a little bit up their driveway, sort of. If they build three stories in front of our property, we won't have any ocean view. And I know that's not a legal thing. But we've spent the money, we've spent 20 grand and it's, you know, part of our investment too. And we just feel like the three-story partition is not necessary. They can build the front or build up or whatever. But three stories with a roof is, we think, a bad, bad deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to speak against the petition or have any concerns in relation to the petition?
Yep.
I think you just put your name. I think you just put your names.
My concern is that the partition is for the garage, however, it's what's hidden under the petition, it's expansion of the house. I feel like it should be separate, separate, uh, petition, because garage, build the garage, I support the garage, however, the other part is not listed in the petition. I learned about it yesterday, uh, and, oh, that there is a petition, uh, planned to, to be built on the, on the house and the house is going to be changed. I think, however, the petition is for the garage. So I would like this commission to look at the, at the petition and consider the petition not potential fines, which are not presented to you as requests. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to speak against or have concerns with the petition? Yes.
Good evening, I'm Kim McGlaughlin, I live at sixteen Greystone Park, uh, number two, and my concern is similar to Yvonne's in that we, we had just found out about it, when we heard about it, it was a garage. We went to the meeting last night, um, thinking that it was going to be about a garage, which I walk the neighborhood all the time with my dog, there's lots of garages, and the vast majority of them are a one-level garage, which would be fine, um, but we learned last night that it was going to be a lot more than that, so I have more concerns about that, and mostly I feel like other, you know, there should be proper notification of that. If it is a, a major expansion of the house, then that's a different story than just building a garage.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to speak against or have any concerns on the petition? Seeing none, um, we'll open it up to the board again. Any thoughts, comments, or motions?
I guess I'm having a hard time with three stories for a garage. Um, I don't have any issues with the addition in the front, where the deck is, I think that's, it fits within the zoning, but it's, it's much bigger, uh, footprint in here, and you're, you're making the garage the prominent feature of the house as opposed to the, the entryway of the house. So I don't know if the petition would consider reducing the, the height of this thing, at least the story, but I, you know, it just seems, it seems, um, it's a pretty substantial increase on the house, um, on that side relative to the garage, when you're also increasing the house on the opposite side of the same house. So I have a hard time, you know, a house that's what, six bedrooms originally, seven, eight bedrooms at one time, and, uh, I, I don't, I don't know why it needs to be that big, but I'd be curious what, what the petition would be open to in revisions.
Yeah. Um, also just recapping on some of the other items that have been raised, so the clarification on the table that Mr. Olson mentioned in terms of the parking, um, also something that caught my eye was the height, so I believe it was the mean or the median, uh, median for the height, attorney Vitale, is it the median or the mean?
Mm-hmm.
It's the mean?
She said the mean.
Yeah, um, so I'm, I'm, I would like some clarification in the very least on those plans, if, if they stand as they are, um, because some of the spires, as Mr. Olson pointed, are higher than others, it's not all flush from the height perspective, so understanding where that mean is being identified, so it doesn't surpass the threshold, um, is something that I'm really looking forward to if it is, if it stays as, as it is. Um, I'm also very interested in having some type of written documentation, because I know that there have been multiple, as mentioned by attendees, multiple community meetings related to this and various iterations of the design, um, but I, I would be, I would look forward to having on our files that that actually happened, or some type of summary memo or letters, um, I think that that would be, in the very least, something that, uh, would benefit to be able to have on file. Um, any other comments, thoughts from the board?
Yeah, yeah, I, I would like to say that, um, it's, it's a little bit disappointing that, um, two of the neighbors here went to the meeting last night and found out that it was going to be a three-story addition instead of just a single-story garage addition. Um, I found that a little disturbing, and I find that, um, when we talk about attributes of not, uh, being a detriment to the neighborhood, um, I do believe it is a detriment to the neighborhood because it decreases the housing values of the other neighbors around them. Um, the ones that have views now will no longer have that view, and that will detrimentally affect the, the value of their homes. So to just blatantly say there's no neighborhood effect is not, I don't think, accurate. Um, um, but, uh, I, I would consider a, a one-story addition, a one-story garage-only addition, um, but I don't think I can consider, um, the plans as they exist right now.
I'm also interested in, in knowing how the, if the board can ask the building commissioner to see if it is of the opinion of the building department that the variance issue that member Christopher raised is legitimate or not. Um, usually when there is an increase in the nature that there's addition of a bathroom or a bedroom, usually that is explicit in our, in our documentation and, in the reading, and that is not here versus a whole other slew of cases that we've read where there is an additional unit and it quantifies the bedrooms, it quantifies all these other things. Um, so I'm, I'm looking forward to also having the opinion from the building commissioner of that.
So, I, I would like to, um, kind of make a motion.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments or, okay.
I make a motion to deny the claims.
You would like to deny?
No.
All right. Any discussion in terms of the motion right now on the floor to deny the petition?
I, I think I'd like to, I don't know if I can amend the motion or?
We, we can have a motion to amend and then we vote.
I think I would like to hear from the building commissioner in opportunity whether the, the, um, petitioner is open to make a decision.
Are you okay with having that opinion?
Um, no.
Vote on the amendment.
I, I would think that we would have to vote on the amendment as proposed and, and shown to us, um, but be open to a, um, can we be open to reach the middle of a, a single-story garage?
The problem is, the people do deny, including, I think I'm right, which is similar for three seconds, for two years, number one. Number two, it's not a given right, you have to go to planning and demonstrate the planning the way the kids have proposed, but it's somehow it's materially different than the one you made to get to the board of peers.
Well, that would be very different in a single-story garage, versus a, that would be very different in a single-story garage versus a three-story addition.
Well, but I can't speak and complain, but I'll tell you what the statute says. Okay, statute says, if you get the guy in a petition, you can't run the same or similar petition for two years, but you can if you go through the planning and you can demonstrate that what you see to me is materially different than what you're not. That's up to another board to decide, and I, I can't speak with that, I don't, I don't know anything to say, honestly. And I brought the question I want to do to address when it comes to here. We revised this plan a million times, and I, I, I attended it, we've also presumed the determination, and that's something people need to consider, that how we should build a petition without any, because the real issue is a lot of coverage, high solid real issue.
I, I understand, but I, I beg to differ in that if you have a view of the ocean, believe me, I, it's a different, I, I listen, I get, I get problems, people who have problems with plant placement because of their view of the ocean is, is absurd.
Assess the field, yes, for every property that surrounds us as well as this here. And if you sold to the chief of assessment, it's weird, it's not sure, I can be mad at you, but.
And I, and I believe, but I believe, I believe also that some people pay more.
I got approval for the people at the antigrunge zone, if they're open, and I got, these people got approval for the people to build the garage, and now they're complaining about someone building a garage, they're complaining about the height, uh, the board is all ready to bring it down to the heat, so that it's not.
Sam, Sam, we've already discussed the fact that we would listen to a case of a single-story garage addition, we are not complaining about the garage.
We're saying we can deny it, I, I don't love it.
I, and I, I hear you, attorney Vitale, and we have a motion on the table, we should take an action on it, and right now what we have is a proposal of a possible amendment, and I see attorney Lamana's hand here. Yeah, it hasn't been seconded. Any other, anybody who seconds the motion? I'm seeing no seconding, so that motion fails.
Change the question.
Um, is there any other motion that would like to be presented by the board?
I, I think, I think I would like to get some input from the building department on this, on, on whether this is variance or six A, um, and then, um, I don't know if the petitioner is open to another, this is the first time we've seen this, and I, I, I understand you made a lot of revisions on this, but this is the first version that we've actually come for us and had a chance to comment on.
Certainly, my private chair, the council, that's in the, not testing the council, certainly what I said to you was that it was an opportunity for people to discuss, it's like moving, talking, competing, and trying to satisfy competing entities in respect to people, but all along, we, I think, relatively reasonable, reached out, we're changing as we brought, what we thought were legitimate issues in Russell. So that, uh, we haven't really changed our position, it's just that we hear from different people and now hear from the board in respect to, and I think, uh, Mr. Olson is right for the stretch, the person who can better speak to this, he's got, uh, he's about to move aside, he gives a house.
So even, even if we check with the building commissioner, all that's going to do is answer the question about a three-story structure that's being added on to the end of this house, when what we're saying is, I, I'm not, I, I can't, no matter what motion you make tonight, I'm not going to be able to vote for a three-story structure. So are you, are you asking to continue the case?
Yes.
Yeah. But then it's going to come back and he's going to say whatever he's going to say, and if it's, and if it's okay, i- if everything is, has been sent out okay, not that I think it has, but if everything's been sent out okay, uh, then we still have to vote on the three-story structure, which I am.
Well, if the building commissioner determines that there is some changes that have to come in the nature of the application itself, then it's either, I would presume, either deny it or withdraw without prejudice so they can correct the petition and possibly cha, make changes to the design, et cetera, so they can be addressed. And I think that that's part of the due diligence, like forgiving a little bit more of time so that we can clarify that out.
I guess, I guess my, my issue is we're, we're, there's an addition on top of an existing footprint, and we're not changing that footprint on the left side of the house, but the right side of the house, we're expanding the building and increasing the non-conformity, and we're making that the most prominent feature of the house. It's the tallest and it's the thing that's going to be seen the most.
It wasn't in the ad.
Right, so, you know, when I think of a house, I'm thinking more the center of the house should be the prominent feature, not the garage, but, so that's, that's my concern, and, and, and.
That's an.
We're going to get that answer and, and we'll see what comes.
So just to, so we can have the motion written down, so it's a motion to continue, um, when is our next possible?
May twentieth.
May twentieth. Attorney Vitale, are you good with that date to be able to come back to us?
And possibly.
We, we, we have, we have, I think, we, we have, and, uh, I'm sure it was, I mean, we, we, yeah, it was, uh, match one, what did you, uh, plan, it's a third petition, and he was pretty responsible, uh, in terms of the time. Yeah, so it's two weeks, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think, if we, I think I can see, uh, again, uh, so he didn't address questions of the rest, he's the guy designing the building, so, but I can get a twin from him, I would think, two weeks.
Okay. So motion to continue, May twentieth, uh, meeting, part of this would be to get in writing an opinion from the building commissioner in relation to the need for a variance or the nature of how this petition is come up. There is a garage, and that is what is being mentioned here on the petition, but we have a bedroom and a bathroom, I believe, in the addition above the garage, um, so does that require an additional variance or some additional kind of relief from the board?
I wouldn't know, if the building commissioner determines that forty-eight cents and variance is required, and I defer to my brother, attorney Vitale, because he wants to see you on the forty-eight cents, knowing that he has to come back in a later day for a variance, that would be a, the petitioner, you may want to combine, but then it would have to be renoticed and re-added. I have a casekeeper, the building commissioner, how we put the rules, he says forty-eight cents is all taken, May twenty eighth, they probably.
Okay. Um, anything else? We're, we're already, we're already closed for public comment, but after we finish dealing with the motion, then we can open it up.
We have some management, that's some legal information, whatever the order does.
We will, we will be able, part of the motion will be to have the architect on the next meeting and be able to answer those, and as well as address the dimensional concerns that have been mentioned, am I correct, Mr. Olson?
Is that, the architect would be president at that meeting or you will change?
And those being recent, just to have a time stamp that we have been post-reading. Good. So, uh, can we have a reading of the language of the motion before we, we make any actions on the motion? And I have a second on that motion.
Motion to continue.
Would like a reading of the, um, from the building commissioner of both the need of variance and the nature of the petition, uh, about the garage, and the bedding added above the garage, and the finding forty-eight six.
Yeah, and if a variance is needed, and an additional variance is needed. And then, uh, and then architect in order to address dimensional concerns. I think that should be pretty good enough to encapsulate it, should give us time to then address this further.
And to continue till the May twen-
May twentieth. Uh, so can we have a roll call on the motion, please?
Do you want updated plans?
It's up to the petitioner.
Yeah.
If they don't update it, it may not.
Yep.
Member Gilrain?
Yes, to continue.
To continue? To May twentieth?
Yes.
Member Christopher?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes, to continue.
Member Cal is to continue the defense, and member, um, will present.
Yes, to continue. All right, so for everybody in attendance, this will be continued to May twentieth. Um, I will be asking our court to send if there is any contact information, or if you would like to leave your email, um, we can send these plans, just to provide and do diligence that everybody can see, and everybody's up to date on what has been. Yeah, but, uh, I have a motion to adjourn, all those say aye. What?
We need to accept the minutes, we want.
Oh, um, do we have a motion to accept the minutes from last meeting? All right, everybody in favor say aye.
Aye.
I have a motion to adjourn, everybody in favor say aye.